Great, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, do you have an announcement for us, Mr. Villalobos?
Yes, Chair Miller and the rest of the Commissioners, good morning, and as I may, I'll repeat the joke I said to Mr. Kupiak, Happy New Year.
Yes.
Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSPTV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Po, Ceninas Valley, Samaria, and Orchid Areas. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSPTV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website, as well as the county's YouTube channel, and will be available for download in a day or two. Shall I move on to the roll call?
Yes, please.
All right, Commissioner Merrick O'Connor.
Here.
Commissioner Kupiak.
Here.
Commissioner Senauer.
Here.
Commissioner Kearns.
Here.
And Chair Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'd like to turn to a perhaps slightly delayed matter of elections for the 2025 year. And with that, what I would like to do is turn first to Mr. Wilson for an explanation of kind of how this process should go in terms of steps, and how, when we are holding elections in May, what that means for kind of terms and process.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. On your agenda, we do have the election of the incoming Chair, and then the Montecito Planning Commission also has a First Chair, First Vice Chair, and Second Vice Chair, and then following that is the appointment of the Secretary and Recording Secretary. That's up for grabs as well. Sorry, just trying to keep it light.
Yeah, you should be so lucky, sir.
Yeah, I know Mr. Dargle's looking for opportunities to grow, so, and maybe Mr. Seawards. So, my recommendation on the election of the Chair is that we take nominations and elections on the Chair first. Typically, the Chair runs through the calendar year, and then the elections will occur again in January. It's a typical format of the Board, County Planning Commission, and the other Boards, is that every, the beginning of every year is the nominations, elections of the new Chair. So, the Chair, whoever that is, will run through December, and then there'll be nominations for new Chair starting January of 2026. So, my recommendation today is that we take the nominations for Chair now that selection, and then swap Chairs, and then have the new Chair take up the mantle, and do the First Vice Chair and Second Vice Chair, and then just proceed through the agenda that way.
Excellent, well, thank you. So, with that in mind, let's turn to the matter of electing a new Chair. Now, this body has traditionally wrote, had, while there is an election every year, and everybody is eligible, there has been a informal pattern that is followed by other Commissions, and I believe the County Board of Supervisors, of rotating the Chair in a particular order. That said, the First District Supervisor has communicated with us and expressed some preferences here, and all of us being appointed by the First District Chair and holding a great deal of respect, I think we are going to potentially kind of be a little novel in how we approach this matter. So, with that, I would like to open the floor to nominations. Director Senauer, or Commissioner Senauer.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Miller. This is on, correct?
Yes.
Red used to be on.
Yes.
And now green's on?
Yes.
Okay, glad that got straightened out. Yes, I would like to move to nominate Commissioner Merrick O'Connor for Chair.
Excellent. Do I have a second for that?
I would second that.
So, move in a second. Are there other names put into nomination? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Villalobos, would you?
Would you like to do a roll call?
Do a roll call vote, yeah.
Sure. Commissioner Merrick O'Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Senauer.
Aye.
Commissioner Kearns.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Wow.
Thank you, and thank you to the Commission for your confidence, for your vote, and particular thanks to Commissioner Miller for his service.
Thank you very much.
Let's move to the election of the First Vice Chair. Are there nominations?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Senauer to First Vice Chair.
I would second that.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? All right, let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Senauer.
Aye.
Commissioner Kearns.
Aye.
Chair Merrick O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. Congratulations. All right, let's move to the election of the Second Vice Chair. Is there a nomination?
Yes, I'd like to put forward for the Second Vice Chair, Commissioner Kupiak.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second.
All right, are there other nominations? All right, nominations are closed. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Senauer.
Aye.
Commissioner Kearns.
Aye.
And Chair Merrick O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. Congratulations. All right. Next item is Item Six, the appointment of the 2025 Montecito Planning Commission Secretary and Recording Secretary. And the nominations, the appointment is for Jeff Wilson, right, as the Planning Commission Secretary? Is that correct? And David Villalobos as the Recording Secretary? Any discussion on that appointment? On those two appointments? All right, roll call, please. Do we need a roll call on that kind of an item? Yes.
We should be formal, but I suppose if we're going to do that, so I would take it, that was a motion to start out, and so I think we'd be looking for a second.
All right, we will.
I second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second.
All right, Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Kupiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Senauer.
Aye.
Commissioner Kearns.
Aye.
And Chair Merrick O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Sorry, Jeff.
Very good. All right, Item Seven on the agenda is the Agenda Status Report, and I'm going to ask the Commission Secretary to present that.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Chair, and welcome as a new Chair, and other Commissioners, welcome back. I'm glad for the thoughtful and deliberation on the appointments today. So, moving into the Agenda Status Report, we actually have one item on our standard agenda, which is a lot line adjustment, and staff and applicants are ready to present on that today. And then, just a matter of note, just as a refresher, the Items 13 and 14 are noticing only, there's no action needed on Items 13 and 14. They're only for noticing purposes only, so we can skip over those when we go through the agenda. Other than that, staff is ready, and applicants are ready to present on the standard agenda items.
Very good.
I can move to the projection report, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. So, our next scheduled hearing is, would be June 18th. There are, as of right now, there are no items projected for that, and I don't anticipate any items being placed on that agenda. And in addition, that's around the same time as the county's budget hearings, and so I'd recommend that we cancel the June hearing. And then, our next hearing after that would be July 16th, and there are two items projected for the 16th. There's another lot line adjustment, and then there's also a project for a as-built wall. And then, as of right now, there isn't anything projected into August, so if we cancel June, our next hearing would be in July. And I recommend we cancel June. So, we look for a motion and a second to cancel June hearing.
All right. Is there a motion to cancel the, you need a motion adopted by the Commission. Is there a motion to cancel the June meeting of the Commission?
I so moved.
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimously approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, I wouldn't have brought it up at this meeting, but because we just canceled June, I would be absent, I would be able to appear remotely for the July meeting, and since we have at times struggled as a quorum at this body, I just wanted to make sure that others would be able to fill the gap that I create.
I also will not be available for July. I will probably not be able to be remote either, so that sort of summarizes that per quorum, we, Chair, have to look to make sure there's a quorum, because I would not be part of a quorum.
Understood. Commissioner Miller, did you say you would be available remotely in July?
I, subject to all of the appropriate rules that I don't always keep in my head, I believe I'd be able to appear remotely.
And does remote participation count towards a quorum?
I don't believe it does.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so you still have a quorum of three, so I would look at the last individual standing to see if they are available for July. And so, we still have a quorum, and then we'd have a quorum in the room. If Mr., sorry, Commissioner Miller wants to appear remotely, then we would just need the location and address, and we'd have to post that and notice that as a potential hearing location or public speaking location. So, that would be if he wants to present or participate remotely.
And if we do that, then he would count towards the quorum?
You'd already have a quorum with three people.
No, understood.
But he would still be able to vote if he, if we notice it and he indicates where that he's.
Right, I'm just concerned that one of the three members expected to be here for some unknown reason doesn't, isn't able to attend, and we would need Commissioner Miller for the quorum. What do we need to do to ensure that we have a quorum under those conditions?
So, Chair and Commissioners, in the event that scenario happens, and that we don't have a quorum in the room, then Commissioner Miller wouldn't be able to count towards that.
He would.
That's correct.
Would not.
In order for him to participate remotely, we'd have to have a quorum in the room.
Okay.
Present.
All right.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Thank you. Is there any possibility, since it might be a consideration of a quorum, depending, that the projects and the applicants could look at August, a different, since there's nothing projected for June, but I guess that's precluded because of possible budget meetings, that if there could be a query, I know staff is in charge of the agenda, but that might be a way to approach it, if possible. But I just thought I'd put that out there. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, we can look at moving those items to August, or there's a potential that we could, there's a hearing, and that so far doesn't have anything projected for the county PC, we could do that, but I would prefer to stay on our typical schedule before we start moving our hearings around. I guess that before we start down this path too much, do we, do we have commitments or semi-commitments for the last three?
Something to know for that month, July's, are my plans. Yeah, it's kind of difficult to know right now. I mean, I don't have any scheduled plans, but I know I'm traveling in the month of July.
Okay, so Chair and Commissioners, here's my recommendation. Why don't we just trail this conversation to the end of the hearing today, and then we can work with staff and look at potentially moving those items to August. Do we have a better read on August as far as attendance? I'm seeing head nods.
So, anybody expected to be absent in August? No? No?
What is the forecasted date of the August meeting?
It's August 20th.
No, I anticipate being.
Well, and while we're at it, September, October, November. Well, and while we're at it, September, October, November, let's just see if you have travel plans for the rest of the year? We'll talk about it at the end of the meeting. Is that the preference?
So we can, I, my preference is that we do trail on that, so that gives the opportunity to coordinate with staff as far as those items in July. And we could, if we need to move them, we can. If that's what the decision is, then let's bring that back up right before we adjourn today.
Okay, is that acceptable to the Commission?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we'll do then. All right. Anything further on this item before we move on? All right, public comment. The public comment period is set aside to allow public testimony on items not on today's agenda. The time allocated to each speaker will be set at the discretion of the Chair. Total time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. When testifying before the Montecito Planning Commission, personal attacks and other disruptive behavior are not appropriate. Are there any requests for public comment?
We have no requests online. Commissioner Miller, would you mind just checking that box next to you, see if there's any? Okay, great. I just did want to point out, however, we did receive a couple of general public comment letters which were in your packet. Otherwise, no.
And those have been distributed to the members of the Commission?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Planning Commissioner, informational reports. Individual Commissioners may present brief reports on planning issues such as seminars, meetings, and literature that would be of interest to the public and/or Commission as a whole. Do any Commissioners have any reports? No?
I guess I have a brief report.
Okay, good.
As I am wont to do daily, I drive up and down the 101 and continue to, as a result, passively monitor its ongoing progress. And I, I will confess to being confused about some of the walls on the sides of the freeways that are definitely not sound walls, but are seemingly not in compliance with all that we had heard regarding floodwater rise. And so it was, a general report is a curiosity about the planning requirements versus what's actually been constructed.
All right. Other reports? Issues? Questions? No? All right, seeing none. We'll move on. The minutes, this is item 11. Minutes of the December 18th, 2024 meeting will be considered. The meeting minutes were distributed with the agenda package? Any staff comment?
Chair Mayor Connor, I just wanted to point out that, point out the attendance for that meeting. So we have two members present that were at that meeting. That's our Commissioners, Kupiak and Senauer. So we're never going to get to three people for this. So what I would suggest is that Commissioner Senauer, Kupiak make a motion to approve these, and then the rest abstain, so we can just move on. We'll never, if we wait for three people, we'll never get these approved.
Very good. All right, Commissioner Senauer?
Yes, I move to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All right. Let's do a roll call on that. Sorry.
Commissioner Miller?
I was absent from that meeting, and I must abstain.
Commissioner Kupiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Senauer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kearns?
Abstain.
And Chair Mayor Connor?
Abstain.
So the vote on that would be 203.
All right, and it will be so recorded in the minutes of this meeting. All right. Item 12, Director's Report and Board of Supervisors Hearing Summary. Welcome to our Director of Planning and Development.
Good morning, Members of the Commission. I'd like to welcome you back to the members that were previously on the Commission, and then the new members, Commissioner Kearns and our Chair, Commissioner Mayor Connor. We're very happy to have you reconstituted. I have a few things to report on. I mean, there's, a lot has happened, but there's just a couple of things I want to focus on, recent board actions. Last week, the Board heard an item related to the Climate Action Plan, and it was about whether or not oil and gas emissions should be included in the cap. And traditionally, most jurisdictions do not include them in their cap. But also, the discussion included prohibition of future wells, and then evolved into a discussion of the phase-out of all oil and gas facilities in the County of Santa Barbara. So there was a Board majority in favor of coming up with a phase-out plan for oil and gas. And we are going to be returning to the Board in October to talk about what that would look like, the kind of work that would be needed in order to enact such an ordinance, the cost and the impact on the long-range work program for the department. So there's more to come on that, but that was, I think, a pretty significant action taken by the Board that I wanted the Commission to know about. And then, I'm happy to entertain any questions about that, if you have them.
When you define facilities, or is that extraction, or is that also transport? Would it?
So it was not 100% clear about that, but I, our, we'll be seeking additional information from the Board when we go back in October, but it was mostly focused on new facilities and existing facilities, so extraction is what it appeared to be focused on. Yeah. And then the next item is, just yesterday, the Board took action to approve the application for a pro-housing designation for the county with the state. And what the pro-housing designation does is it gives the county points in grant applications and makes grants more available for affordable housing and other types of grants, like there's infill infrastructure grants, climate communities grants, local partnership grants, transit and intercity rail capital program, and sustainable transportation planning grants. So a wide range of grants. If we have this designation, we will get more points in the application process. And so the goal is really, with the pro-housing designation, is to support the expansion of affordable housing and the preservation of existing affordable housing. That, that's the long-term goal. And so the Board voted to approve the application. That will be submitted to State Housing and Community Development Department, and we expect that that will be approved. Right now, of all the cities in California, I think there are 40 cities that have that designation and six counties that have that designation of the 58 counties. So we will be one of the, the first.
If I could ask, so, so it's predicated on a point system?
Well, grant applications usually are predicated on a, a point system, right? So you have a number of things that are working in your advantage, and you get scored by the grant community committees when they're reviewing them. So the more points you have, the more likely you are to receive the funding.
And is there different categories you've mentioned for different point?
I think your microphone is not on.
For different points that will be awarded? Is that right?
So, so by having this designation, we will be able to check that box and get the points associated with it? Yeah.
Mr., um, the, understanding that this is a benefit on the points side, and understanding this is still very early days, should we, and additionally, understanding that affordable housing is potentially not necessarily under the jurisdiction of, of this body? All that said, will this likely lead to either constraints or a different set of rules on approval or denial of affordable? What is, what does it mean to be pro how, I mean, it feels, it sounds good, but I mean, what, what is the application of that positive sentiment?
It, it really is mostly about funding. It doesn't, it, it's not like the Housing Accountability Act or State Density Bonus Law, which have specific findings under which you can deny a project, right? They're very limited. This isn't about that. This is more focused on making sure that jurisdictions that take steps to support affordable housing have some advantages. And, and I think our housing element does take steps to preserve and advocate for affordable housing in our community, and so that's part of our application process. So it doesn't really change the laws around approvals or denials of housing.
Thank you.
Other questions? How does a county qualify to be designated as a pro-housing county?
So you're, now you're going to ask details that I don't know, so, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are, I mean, part of it is what we've done in our housing element, so that we have policies and programs that advocate or, or support the preservation of existing affordable housing, and then also the creation of new affordable housing. So that's in part, but I don't have the detail on exactly what else was included in that application process. But we can certainly get you that information.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in that. It sounds like a statewide program intended to encourage cities and counties to adopt policies and procedures that promote the construction of affordable housing.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
To provide some serious financial incentives to doing it?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Good.
Yeah. The other items I wanted to mention to the Commission are future board items. And we mentioned earlier in the hearing today that we have budget hearings, and that's the week of June 16th. So that'll be the final hearing. We already had our budget workshops, and that happened in April. And then the final hearings will be in, in June. Other future board items included are emergency shelters, and that is a package of amendments to our current code to come into compliance with state law regarding emergency shelters. One of the things that the law requires is that we measure how many homeless people we have, so that's the point-in-time count that we do across the county, and cities do it as well. And then how many beds we have for homeless, for temporary shelter. So you have to have an equal number of beds or more as your point-in-time count in order to, to not be required to identify specific zones where emergency shelters will be truly ministerial. So if you're, if you have too many homeless for the beds you have, then we would be processing a amendment to our zoning code that would select these zone districts and make emergency shelters a ministerial permit. We, right now, have just a little bit more bed space than our point-in-time count, which is, which is a good thing, obviously. That is projected to last for a few years. The requirement in state law is that for, it's for our entire housing element cycle, which ends in 2031. So what we will be doing is monitoring the point-in-time count and our bed count. And if we dip below where we are in terms of accommodating the number of homeless people we have in the county, then we will be coming back with more ordinance changes. But right now, we're, we're just a little bit above. We have a few facilities, like the Dignity Moves facilities that we have. We have one on Santa Barbara Street. We have one at the Batavia Center. We have one at our old juvenile hall site. Those have expiration dates, and so we'll be monitoring those. And if others come online and balance them, we won't have to move forward with a package of ordinances. But the package that we did bring forward to the Planning Commission were minor tweaks in order to come into conformance with state law.
Any questions?
Could you characterize for, within the planning zone that we represent, how does, how are we zoned, or what is the scope of the zone that we would fall in for homeless emergency shelter? I'm sorry, I, I'm unclear as to what that zone map, what would an overlap of the emergency shelter for homeless zone map look like with us? Or is Montecito its own zone? Is it, is the South Coast a zone?
So, so Commissioner Miller through the Chair. We have four zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, three zoning ordinances. We have Montecito, coastal, and inland, right? So we would be looking at different types of zone districts. Like, when, when we were first considering this amendment, we were looking at some of our commercial zone districts where we would allow for emergency shelters to be ministerial. I, I don't know which zone districts would be selected in the future. You, Montecito has limited commercial zoning right now. You have neighborhood commercial and a couple of C2 areas, particularly one by Coast Village Road, and I think, I'm sure, I think that's actually the only one that's C2, but.
So just to properly understand that, when they do the census count for homelessness, and they are looking, and, and if the, if the resource don't match the need?
Yeah.
The lens at which they are looking at it would be through all three of those plannings. It's not like, say, equivalent to like a flood control district that covers multiple jurisdictions. So the, Montecito's lack of emergency shelter means that we are out of compliance with even a homeless count of one? Am I, 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 I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm wanting to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
Absorb me what you're saying.
Right, Commissioner Miller through the Chair, we look at the whole county. We will look at the whole county, and we will look at areas throughout the county that might be able to accommodate emergency shelters. The interesting thing apart about the state law, it says, the sites, you have to identify sites that are vacant and available. So we wouldn't be able to identify sites that already have existing commercial development or any development on them. They have to be vacant. It's very similar to the, what happened with our rezoning process in the housing element. Those sites that we selected for rezoning had to be vacant and could be developed with housing, in this housing cycle.
So, am I properly understanding that a housing, emergen, housing may be the wrong term, emergency shelter resources, that the, emergency shelter resource in the North County would, would go against the count for homelessness in total, or?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not, we are not going?
We're not doing it by community.
Yeah, that was what I was trying to.
Yeah. Community plan by community plan. We're not doing that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? No.
And then we have a mobile home park overlay that's moving forward. This was brought to us by the Board. There are concerns about the conversion of some of the senior mobile home parks in our, across our county, and, or just even conversion of mobile home parks that are all age. And mobile home parks tend to provide a level of affordable housing naturally, and the Board had a strong desire to place an overlay on the mobile home parks across the county. And so we will have a senior overlay, and we will have a regular all-age mobile home park overlay. And the goal with those overlays is to ensure that they remain as mobile home parks, to maintain, to preserve that housing that exists. And that's going to be going to the Board on July 15th. And that's all I have.
Very good. Any questions for the Director?
I've been doing a lot of talking, and I won't have to do this every meeting.
Commissioner Miller, you're welcome to it.
He's had several months to build up his questions.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is, I, I've missed you, Director Plowman. That, as you're approaching the budget workshops and we go into the budget, and since we won't be meeting in June, could you characterize for us what items Planning and Development will be asking for funding for that would potentially be matters, like either study or long-term work, things that would apply to us as a, as a Commission?
Commissioner Miller through the Chair. So the budget hearings are, we're not asking for any new funding in our budget hearings. I think what you're referring to is our long-range work program. And so we have a number of items in our long-range work program, and they include And so we have a number of items in our long-range work program, and they include a lot of mandated things that we're working on. So we took our long-range work program to the Board in April. And they include things that we're working on, like the circulation element, which is a mandate, the safety element, which is also mandated, environmental justice element, which is also mandated. So we have a number of those things. One of the things that they, that we have in our work program is short-term rentals. That is an item that could alter how things occur in the Montecito area. It would affect you if we move forward with that. That tends to be the ordinance package that gets shifted around when the Board decides they have another priority mid-year, and that is currently happening. So I don't know if that's going to stay in our work program. And then we have a series of things that we're working on in terms of ordinance packages. One of them is the creation of new ministerial permits. So the Board has given direction to the Department to look at where the break is in things that are ministerial versus things that require discretion and that can be appealable. And what we are doing is working on creating a set of permits that actually, like most jurisdictions, that most jurisdictions have a level of what we call truly ministerial permits, where there's no appeal. So ADUs are like that, right? They come in, all they have to do is follow the codes, and they get their approval. So we will be creating another classification of uses or structures that will fit into that category, and that's something that will come before the Montecito Planning Commission. But that's a ways out. We're still developing that, and there's going to be environmental review on it, and so that, there's some time before that comes before your commission.
Specifically, do you have, in the long-term planning forecast, anything relating to very large boxes of retail?
We do not.
In fact, okay, thank you.
Are you hoping for a Costco in Montecito?
I had, a bug had been put in my ear on that topic, and so I was just curious as to whether or not that was, for something like that to advance, it usually needs to start at a budget and staffing level, and so I was, yeah.
Right. What I will say to that matter is that Montecito is primarily zoned neighborhood commercial. Big boxes are not allowed in that zone district, so...
Well, that's a comfort to all of us.
Yes.
Other questions?
I do, yeah. A question about the short-term rentals in the coastal zone, and vis-à-vis the Coastal Commission direction, and the LCPs, et cetera. So could you, last I heard, which was many months ago, was that it's sort of on the back burner here with the county because of what you just articulated. There's other things, and you're sort of putting this down the ladder. Is there any sort of sense when, since it does affect Montecito coastal zone, which is quite significant, how, what is, right now, what is the opportunity for renting in the coastal zone, short-term, since there are no, there is no structure around it?
Yeah, Commissioner Senhor through the chair. So there are no regulations in the coastal zone right now for the county, and so people can have short-term rentals. What the county has done is been tracking that and ensuring that they're paying bed tax associated with it. But there are plenty of opportunities for people to rent their homes out.
Is there a registry that is mandated?
There is, our treasure tax collector works with them, and they track them through, we actually have a software, and we've engaged a consultant that runs a program that tells us what is actually being rented, what's on the market, and then our treasure tax collector goes out and contacts them and says, you owe the county some money. Yeah.
And one more question, Ag Enterprise ordinance, how is that, is that completed? Is it in place?
Yes.
Is it still going down the track after how many years?
Yes. Actually, and this is, this is, something does not impact Montecito, but the county had been working on a program for a very long time that is designed to give farmers and ranchers an alternative source of income to help support their operations, because it's sometimes difficult to make a profit, actually, in that business. So it's called the Agricultural Enterprise Ordinance, and it allows things like, you can have some campgrounds on your property, you can have farm-to-table dinners, you can have educational events, you can have a farm stay, which is like a bed and breakfast, but sort of linked to your agricultural operation. And that was adopted by the Board last year in 2024, and so we are now implementing it. And we're sort of working through some, you know, it's a brand-new program, and so there's some bumps and changes and, you know, procedural things that we're identifying that we want to streamline so that we can get these things moving through the process as quickly as possible.
Other questions? No?
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Plowman.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
All right. We have arrived at item 13, which does not require any action, nor item 14, which is a waived public hearing. And that brings us to item 15, the standard agenda. Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Cheryl Trosky and Simon Sutton to consider case numbers, case number 23LLA2, and to determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to State SEQA Guideline Section 15305.
And who will be presenting the staff report on this?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kathleen Volpe, and I will be presenting the proposal for the Trosky-Sutton lot line adjustment.
Chair?
Here we have an aerial view of the proposed project site. The lot line adjustment is between two neighboring properties. The subject parcels, the first one is located at 1144 East Mountain Drive, which is outlined in blue, and the second is 1140 East Mountain Drive, which is outlined in red. The parcels are located in the Montecito inland area. The area is Zone 5E1, and the lots gain access via East Mountain Drive, which is shown on this map by the purple line. As some background, these parcels, there are two legal parcels. They're shown on parcel map number 14157. It's the E1, they're both located in the E1 zone. It's a one-family residential. Both properties are developed with a single-family residential homes and associated accessory development. It's a quick overview, and I'll go into more detail as we look at upcoming slides. Essentially, water tanks were installed after the Thomas fire, and they were installed across the property line. And so this, between those, the two property lines, so 1140 was on 1140 and 1144 East Mountain Drive. And so this lot line adjustment essentially seeks to amend that mistake and have all of the water tanks fall onto 1144 East Mountain Drive. So we'll take a look here. So these are the existing parcels. In red, we see 1144 East Mountain Drive and 1140 East Mountain Drive. The water tanks are located in the green box. And again, as you can see, they span, they span the parcel line. Essentially, you know, after the Thomas fire, the owner of 1144 East Mountain Drive installed the tanks, you know, in, for future fire suppression as a cautionary measure. You know, it came to her attention that the water tanks were going on to the neighboring property, and so the idea was to, you know, adjust the property, property line so that it was wholly on her property, and basically correct the error. So here we see what the proposed parcel lines would be with the approval of the lot line adjustment. Again, 1144 East Mountain Drive is in red, and 1140 East Mountain Drive is in blue, and the water tanks are within the green box. And you can see now that they are all located solely on the 1144 East Mountain Drive, the original intended property. Considered with this correction were setbacks, so all of the water tanks are located at least five feet from the parcel line and are in conformance with our setback regulations. The lot line adjustment is consistent with a comprehensive plan, including the Montecito Community Plan. Specifically, the existing and proposed lot sizes are and remain conforming to the 5E1 E-zone. It is consistent with the MLUDC and Chapter 21, specifically the residential zone lots and development standards, including lot area, lot width, and lot setbacks. As conditions, so when the owner came in for her lot line adjustment, she became aware that the largest water tank required a permit. So as a condition of this lot line adjustment, the, that, the largest water tank will be permitted. So as conditioned, the project is in compliance with all laws, rules, and regulations, and no violations exist on the property. The proposed project can be found exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15305. This section exempts minor alterations to land use limitations in areas with an average slope of less than 20%, which do not result in any changes in land use or density. So this lot line adjustment will not result in any changes in land use or density, nor there is, is there the creation of any new parcels. The area of the lot line adjustment has portions that exceed 20% slope in the general vicinity. However, the average slope of the parcels is less than 20%. And further, the parcels are developed with existing residential dwellings and accessory structures, and no new development potential will result from the project itself. So staff recommends your commission make the following actions: make the required findings for approval, including SEQA findings, determine the project exempt from SEQA, approve the project subject to the conditions included as attachment fee. That concludes my presentation, and we're available for questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
I would like to offer ex parte before I start with questions.
I was gonna, I was gonna request ex parte reports from the Commissioners before we open the public hearing. Before we get to that, let's just see if there are any questions for staff. And there aren't any. All right. So let, before we open the public hearing, let's have ex parte reports from the members of the commission. Commissioner Senhor.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I visited the applicant yesterday and spent about 15 minutes taking a look at the property and the project, and just eyes-on and walkthrough was very, very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Other reports?
I met with the impacted, the 1140 East Mountain Drive owners, and confirmed that they were very much on board for this plan.
And Commissioner Kearns?
Yes, I met with the applicant for about 15 minutes, walked the property, saw the location of the tanks, and felt that it was helpful to have my eyes on it.
Very good. Anyone else? All right. Hearing, no other requests for reports, let's open the public hearing. Are there requests to speak? And is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this application?
So Chair and Commissioners, we might want to invite the applicant to come up for a presentation?
Sure. Is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to make a presentation to the commission? The applicant is here.
Thank you, Commissioners. I don't have anything to present. I think staff was pretty comprehensive, and I really don't have anything to add.
Very good. Thank you for joining us today. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this particular item?
And we have no one online to request.
Ah, here we have one.
Hi, I'm the other applicant, and I think it was presented just fine by Kathleen, and I have nothing further to say.
Very good. Thank you for joining us today. And there are no other requests to speak, either online or in person?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right, then I will, without objection, close the public hearing and move to commission discussion of the project and the recommended actions. The floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to comment that I think it is very helpful when two parties, like the applicant and the neighbor, where there was a, an issue of encroachment onto the neighboring party, where there was discussion, and there was agreement that something could very well be worked out. And I think, I think that that shows that a conversation and a dynamic between two neighbors with an issue before them can be satisfactorily worked out without going further to an appeal, et cetera, et cetera. So I commend the two, the applicant and the associated neighbor for working this out. I think it's of great import with a great result. So, thanks. I don't know if the 1140 is here, but you're the 1140. Okay, great. Thank you. Kudos to both of you. Very much appreciated for the community and setting an example. So, thank you.
Other comments?
Commissioner Miller? I only hope those nicely newly permitted and lot line adjusted water tanks are never used.
Indeed. Commissioner Miller?
Just a question for staff. How does this matter come to us? I mean, this seems like a great ministerial thing.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so lot line adjustments in the Montecito community planning area go to the Montecito Planning Commission. Normally, in other areas of the county, if it's exempt from environmental review, it would go to the zoning administrator, but in this case, the MPC Act says the Z.A., so that's why it would go to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Let me echo Commissioner Senhor's sentiments about the applicants working this out, and staff for bringing this to us quickly and efficiently, and solving this problem in the way that these problems ought to get solved. So thank you to all of you. All right.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to move that we take the recommended actions recommended by staff?
All right. There's a motion on the floor to take the three recommended actions that are shown on the last page of this, of the slides, shown up on the Board. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Kearns seconded it. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, or all in favor? How do you prefer this?
Whichever you prefer.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion is unanimously carried. Congratulations to both applicants and the staff for an excellent job. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if we could go back to the projection report?
Yes.
So where we left off was a discussion about the July hearing, and there's two items currently projected on that, and the conversation was, what is the opportunities for adjusting those to other hearing dates? The fact of the matter is, if the Montecito, if the commission decides to just cancel July, then those items will be automatically rescheduled to another date. So that, if you just take a motion and you cancel that hearing, then you can, and that way, we're not on pins and needles debating whether or not we'll have a quorum... way, we're not on pins and needles debating whether or not we'll have a quorum in July. If we feel confident that we have a quorum in July, then I would prefer to leave those on so that the projects aren't delayed. But if there's any sense that we won't have a quorum, then the best approach probably just cancel it now, and then we can just, staff will just work with the applicants to reschedule them on the next available hearing, or whatever hearing is appropriate or applicable for the applicants.
All right, so let me inquire of the other Commissioners. We know two Commissioners won't be here in July. Commissioner Kearns, you expect to be here?
I expect to be here.
Okay. Commissioner, you cannot commit. Commissioner Miller?
I can commit to not being.
Okay.
Not a useful commitment.
I am not available.
Okay, so we know, we know two are going to be absent, one can't commit, so it sounds like canceling the July meeting is a good idea, and moving those items to August is a appropriate accommodation for the problem, right? Everybody agrees?
Agreed.
Everybody seems to agree. Then that's, I think, what we'll do. So we're going to cancel June?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think we already canceled June. Now we'll just take a motion and vote on canceling July. And just an FYI, this doesn't have to be part of the motion, but they may not both get moved to August. One may end up in August, one may be in September. But staff will work with the applicant. So the motion only needs to be to cancel July, and then we'll deal with the rest of it.
Okay. So I need a motion to cancel the July meeting.
I so moved.
All right. Commissioner Kubiak?
Second.
All right, and seconded by Commissioner Senhor. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimously approved. Is there any other business to come before the commission?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I think that concludes our meeting today.
All right, very good. And I thank you all for this, to the staff and for the commission for joining us today, and our meeting is adjourned.